Seventh, 2013 Regular Meeting of the Thirty-Fourth Council of the City of Berkeley. Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Baker?
Here.
Councilmember Blanchard?
Here.
Councilmember Kadekell?
Here.
Councilmember Platt Onson?
Here.
Councilmember Stedman?
Here.
Mayor Protem Turbrak?
Here.
Mayor O'Dwyer?
Here. Now, the first order of business is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, a motion to approve the agenda with one addition. I'd like to make motion addition of item number seven to the agenda for motion M. 113 to add Juanita Mathis to the Historical Committee.
Thank you. Is there support?
Support.
Support. Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll on the agenda?
Yes. Blanchard?
Yes.
Kadekell?
Yes.
Platt Onson?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrak?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. And now, the invocation. Is there someone to lead the invocation? Please stand.
Would you join me in prayer? Father God, we thank you for this committed group of people here to making this city great. And we just thank you for their dedication for all who make Berkeley such a great city to live in. And, God, we just ask your blessing on this time, on this city, as we enter 2013 now. God, we just pray that you would do just a mighty blessing on this city, that you would do great work through the city council, through the school district. We pray your protection on our students who go to school every day in all our schools here. God, we've seen the evil that can happen at schools in the last couple of months, and so we just pray our protection on the kids. Lord, just do a great work now in this group here. We pray your blessing on this agenda, each and every item, that your will would be done, that you would give wisdom and discernment to each and every one of these members. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now, we come to the Citizens' Comments portion of tonight's meeting, when you may present your thoughts on issues that are not included on tonight's agenda. Councilmembers will not engage you in discussion. If your concern needs to be addressed by a member of city staff or a department of the city, please sign your name at the desk of the clerk. You may speak on a specific agenda item when it is being considered. When you come to the microphone, please state your name and city of residence.
Good evening. Judy Rubin. I live in Huntington Woods, and I hear tell there's a game tonight, some kind of game. So, I better hurry up. But I'm actually here just to thank all of you for your support in the past to the coalition, the Tri-Community Coalition, and encourage you and ask for your support in the coming year of 2013. And I also wish you a Happy New Year and a healthy new year. And I wanted to draw your attention also to two seventeens. One is January 17th, which is in a couple of weeks, and it's Meet the Mayor's Night, and it's going to be at the Huntington Woods Rec. Center, no, Huntington Woods Library, take that back, at seven o'clock in the evening. And Mayor O'Dwyer will be there, and Mayor Gillum, and Mayor McLoughlin from Oak Park. And talking about the cities that we represent as it due to, and I don't know if there's a viewing public, but if there is, maybe the public can come. June 17th is our largest fundraiser. It's our golf outing, and that will be at Rackham, so it's close by. And that's a Monday, nine o'clock tee time. And I know a lot of familiar faces, I see. And I also want to thank you so much for your considering the proclamation of our Drug Facts Week, which will come later in the agenda. So, thank you so much for all of your support, and I wish you all a Happy New Year.
Thank you, Judy. Thank you for all you do for our community. Any other public comments?
I'm not selling anything, not today. But I am here on behalf of the Berkeley Rotary Club. The Rotary Club has partnered with the Berkeley School District this year in an anti-bullying project, and we are inviting anyone who can attend to a Rotary luncheon. This is going to be on a Tuesday, February 5th, deviation from our usual Monday date. We have Judith Levy from the U.S. Attorney's Office coming. She's going to be speaking at Anderson Middle School in the morning, and she is going to come and speak to the Rotary. And we're encouraging members of the community to come out if you can. She's going to be speaking about bullying and discrimination. The lunch is at 12:15 at the Methodist Church on 12 Mile and Kipling. If you have any questions, please contact me. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, seeing no one else then, we move on to the Consent Agenda. Ms. Prince, would you please read the items on tonight's Consent Agenda?
Item number one, Approval of the Minutes. Matter of approving the minutes of the regular city council meeting on December 17, 2012. Item number two, Recognizations and Presentations. Comments by Congressman Sandra Levin. Item number three, Proclamation P. 113. Matter of approving proclamation P. 113 recognizing Martin Luther King Jr. Day. Item number four, Proclamation P. 213. Matter of approving proclamation P. 213 recognizing National Drug Facts Week.
Is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Councilmember Kadekell?
Support.
Support by Councilmember Blanchard. Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll?
Kadekell?
Yes.
Platt Onson?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrak?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. And now, Ms. Prince, would you please read item number one on tonight's regular agenda?
Recognizations and Presentations. Matter of recognitions or presentations from the Consent Agenda.
Thank you. It is a distinct honor to welcome to the microphone a former resident of Berkeley, I believe Edgewood, the ranking member of the House Ways and Means Committee, and our new congressman, Sandy Levin.
Well, thank you. And it's a privilege to be here, and thank you for letting me say a few words. It's tempting to say more than a few. As you can imagine, there are lots of memories. I was reminded a few minutes ago about the name of the dog who lived two doors down that was our children's second favorite animal. We had our own dog. As I think back, the first public office that I held was representing Berkeley on the Board of Supervisors. I was appointed with the recommendation, as I remember it, of George Kuhn. George was mayor then, and we had some different political backgrounds, but we worked closely together. And then, of course, in the State Senate, representing the city, and then in the Congress, and then there was an interval when I did not. And once again, I have the privilege of representing the city. Let me just mention a couple of programs we've been working on of major concern here. Judy Rubin has mentioned one of them. It's been now Hillary's our Chief of Staff, what was it, the Anti-Drug '93. So, it's been that long since Rob Portman, who's now in the Senate, and I derived the idea of federal support for community anti-drug coalitions. And it started off as a relatively small program and has now grown into a major federal program with $100 million going to communities. Now, over 700 have received seed money to fight drugs. And the Tri-Community Coalition has been the recipient of one of these grants after immense effort, if I might say so. And so, she comes here to thank you, if I might say so, that all of you should thank Judy. I mentioned George Kuhn. As you know, the Major Drain Project eventually was named after George, I think, very deservedly. There's been, from the water, revolving fund, well over $100 million that has gone into that project that serves all of these communities. So, let me just finish saying a few words about what the job is ahead, and I'll avoid further reminiscing about our wonderful days here with my late wife, raising our children. They're going to school here. As you know, we've had a major tussle in Washington. I don't remember celebrating the New Year, since I had to celebrate it with all of my colleagues. And we weren't necessarily in a celebration mood. And we have major tussles ahead these next couple of months. We avoided going over one cliff, but we have a major, I think, set of cliffs ahead of us. One relates to sequestration. And let me just say a word about the need for us to achieve some balance as we proceed, because the sequestration calls for cuts of about a trillion dollars, half from defense and half from domestic programs other than Medicare or Social Security. So, that means a lot of domestic programs are at stake if we don't find an alternative to sequestration. And a lot of them would affect this community that our family has been so much a part of, and now, again, I have the privilege of representing. For example, water pollution monies could be very much at stake. And there was a proposal that came out of the Appropriations Subcommittee on Water that would have cut the program that funded so much of the water resource development here, would have cut it in half. The heating program is also, for example, at stake. The COPS program, the FIRE grant program, is also at stake. All of the transportation monies could be affected by the sequestration. Also, the Community Development Block Grant, and I checked again, the monies that you have received, they come through the county under the structure. But as you know better than I, the money has gone up and down. And there's a real threat that the resources for this budget year will be dramatically curtailed, especially if sequestration goes through and could, as I understand it, reduce the funding that would come here almost by half. So, there's a lot at stake in the next two months, because the deadline that we set in this last go-around for sequestration is the end of February. And it isn't leap year, so we have only February 28th instead of the 29th. You might ask, the way you conduct yourself in Washington, is it likely that you'll need that extra day? I hope not. Also, if I might end with this, my late wife, Vicky, and others from this community were very, very much involved in the school system here and formed the Berkeley Better Schools many decades ago, which continues and which has been so instrumental in the development of this wonderfully high-caliber school system. And we also fought to have a community college campus here in South Oakland, because in those days, there was nothing but Auburn Hills and then Farmington. And the proposal was that kids would take the bus from Berkeley to Farmington. And there was no bus. And so, another program that's in jeopardy in the sequestration is Pell Grants. And there are thousands and thousands of kids in this county who go to Oakland Community College who receive Pell Grants, thousands and thousands. Between Oakland and Macomb, the number's over 20,000, middle-class kids, basically, who need some help in addition to the loans they take out. So, there's lots at stake, and I think we distributed, Jeremy's here from our office, as well as our Chief of Staff, some materials regarding the services provided by our office. And I'm hopeful that all of you, as elected officials and the citizenry, will be in touch with us. Redistricting had some rather unusual shapes, but Gary Peters represented this community after I did, and I think very ably. And while I was very unhappy with what I thought were the rather unusual, distorted at times, at some times, contours of redistricting, one of the privileges and one of the positives that came out of it was that I can come home. And so, I come home to Berkeley with immense emotion, if I might say so, and gratitude to all of you for your continued service for this wonderful neighborhood of a community, Berkeley. So, that's my report.
Thank you, Sandy. We are enormously proud of what you do for us in the Congress and what you do for our country, and we're grateful. We wish you continued success.
I'm grateful to each and every of you. Some of us have known each other a long time, others less. But I was involved, I'll finish, I remember a contest for, when people ran for the city council, I was deeply immersed in that. And we put together, as our main campaign tool, Easter eggs. And we put the names of the three people on these Easter eggs and said, "Vote for three good eggs." And we went door to door. We boiled the eggs. And so, it's my privilege to represent this community with all of you good eggs representing the community. Thank you.
And now, I have asked Councilmember Platt Onson to read proclamation 113.
A proclamation of the Council of the City of Berkeley recognizing Martin Luther King Jr. Day. Whereas January 21st, 2013, is Martin Luther King Day, the observation of the January 15th, 1929 birthdate of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., and whereas Martin Luther King Jr. Day was made a federal holiday by President Ronald Reagan on November 2nd, 1983, and whereas in 1964, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. was the youngest man, second American, and third African-American man to win the Nobel Peace Prize. And whereas on April 13th, 1968, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. proclaimed, "Let us rise up tonight with a greater readiness. Let us stand with a greater determination, and let us move on in these powerful days, these days of challenge, to make America what it ought to be. We have an opportunity to make America a better nation." And whereas Coretta Scott King once said, "The greatest birthday gift my husband could receive is if people of all racial and ethnic backgrounds celebrated the holiday by performing individual acts of kindness through service to others." And whereas Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. recognized the power of service to strengthen communities and challenged others to take action to lift up their neighbors. And whereas volunteers, through their service on boards, committees, commissions, organizations, and their many selfless acts, have helped make the city of Berkeley a wonderful community in which to live and work. And whereas the city of Berkeley and surrounding areas have a history of racial divide which the city of Berkeley is committed to bridging. And whereas the city of Berkeley is welcoming of all people and celebrates the diversity of the metro Detroit region. Now, therefore, the city of Berkeley resolves, Section 1, that the Berkeley City Council officially proclaims January 21st, 2013, as Martin Luther King Jr. Day in the city of Berkeley. And Section 2, that the Berkeley City Council recognizes the efforts of Berkeley residents and businesses to serve others and encourages all residents, businesspeople, and city personnel to help realize the dream of Dr. King by looking past differences, working toward equality, and serving humanity by celebrating the King Day of Service this year and every year. Proclaimed this 7th day of January, 2013, at a regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Berkeley. Phil O'Dwyer, Mayor.
Thank you. And now, I have asked the Mayor Protem to read proclamation 213.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A proclamation of the Council of the City of Berkeley recognizing National Drug Facts Week. Whereas National Drug Facts Week is sponsored by the National Institute of Drug Abuse, abbreviated as NIDA, at the National Institutes of Health and the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, in accordance with other federal and private partner organizations, to encourage teens to ask questions about drugs and drug abuse and receive scientifically-based facts and answers in return. And whereas, from that day forward, National Drug Facts Week will occur in the winter with an annual seven-day celebration anchored by the NIDA's National Drug Facts Chat Day, an annual event that provides high school students across the United States the opportunity to ask questions of the nation's leading experts in the field of drug abuse and addiction via a web chat. And whereas, National Drug Facts Week is a celebration of the inquisitive minds of teenagers and encourages them to ask questions about drugs and drug abuse and get scientifically-based answers without judgment or biased comment. Whereas, the National Institute on Drug Abuse stimulates most of the world's research on drug abuse and addiction and can offer science as a key element of the national and community conversation about drugs. And whereas, National Drug Facts Week celebrates the efforts, technical difficulty, the efforts of national and community organizations working with teens to encourage this science-based conversation about drugs and drug abuse. And whereas, the Tri-Community Coalition has chosen the city of Berkeley to officially launch our local efforts. Now, therefore, the city of Berkeley resolves, Section 1, that the Berkeley City Council, on behalf of the Tri-Community Coalition, officially proclaims Monday, January 28th through Sunday, February 3rd, 2013, to be National Drug Facts Week in the city of Berkeley. And Section 2, that the Berkeley City Council urges all citizens to participate in the activities planned hereforth. Proclaim this 7th day of January, 2013, at a regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Berkeley. Phil O'Dwyer, Mayor.
Thank you. And thank you to the Tri-Community Coalition for all they do to help prevent drug problems in our schools and in our community. And now, Ms. Prince, we're ready to move on to item number two on tonight's agenda.
Receive and File. Matter of receiving and filing the Berkeley Public Library, 2011, 2012 Annual Report.
Is there a motion to approve or accept this report?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Stedman?
Support.
Support by Councilmember Kadekell. Ms. DeSessa.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. You know, this item was really ready for you at the last council meeting, but for whatever reason, it is appearing before you today. We have our library director, Celia Morse, giving you a good report. But before she begins, I would like to simply add that, you know, we really take our library, at least some of us, we may take our library for granted. It is really, in today's world, much more than just the library. And for many individuals, it's a place where they can communicate with others through the use of our Internet. It also allows or provides for entertainment for people of all ages. We have CDs and audiobooks and things of that sort. And it's also a place where people can come together and just simply meet with their neighbors and find out what's happening within their own families. So, with that, I'd like to turn it over to our Director of Library, Celia Morse, and have her give us a report. Thank you, Celia.
Another technical difficulty.
Another technical difficulty. We'll get it together.
Well, the mayor assured me I didn't need to read it word for word. That you all have read it already and are more than familiar with it. I guess I do want to apologize for the lateness of it, unfortunately, as an annual report on the fiscal year, not the calendar year, so I am extremely slow, not speedy, but I did have a bad summer, and things got really behind, and we're catching up, or we're trying to. I guess I would only just elaborate a little bit on what Jane said and say, "It's such a different world than it was 20 years ago. 20 years ago, I probably would have helped you find a book or maybe a movie. Now, I'm just as likely to be helping you download a book to your iPad or download an audiobook to your MP3 player, or for some people, help fill out an online job application." It's a very, very job now, or I can help a 12-year-old find a book about, you know, what was going on between the British and the colonists, as I did at about 5:30 this afternoon. We see everyone from senior citizens with walkers to newborn babies to, especially after school, lots of kids, lots of teenagers. I keep hearing about the demise of libraries, but it doesn't seem to be happening in our community. The foot traffic in the building is incredible. You can hardly find a place to sit, especially at 3:00 or 4:00 in the afternoon. And we finished another busy year, and we're in the middle of one more. This is my 30th annual report. It's hard for me to believe that 30 years have gone by, but I apologize for the lateness, but I'm glad to be here to present it. If you have any questions, I would be happy to try and answer them for you.
Any questions? This is a very thorough report, and I know all my colleagues have gone through it in detail and with pride as well, in terms of the volume of services that we provide for the community. As a matter of fact, the library is becoming more essential rather than less important as we go forward, it seems to me.
Yeah, and I could tell people where the mayor hides out on Saturday mornings, but I won't.
It's a quiet place to correct papers on a Saturday morning.
Back in the corner.
That's right. Thank you. If there are no other questions, then, Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll?
Platt Onson?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrak?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Kadekell?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. And now, Ms. Prince, would you read item number three on tonight's agenda?
Resolution Number R. 113. Matter of approving a letter of understanding with the Berkeley Public Safety Officers Association regarding a public safety officer contract position.
Is there a motion to approve R. 113?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Blanchard?
Support.
Support by Councilmember Stedman. Ms. DeSessa.
Council, the first step in this process is to ask the city council to consider this letter of agreement between the city of Berkeley and the Berkeley Public Safety Officers Association. They, together with Chief Eshman, have come up with this agreement, and it has also been reviewed by our city attorney as well, and he has recommended consideration as well. But this is just simply the first step towards appointing a contractor position. This contract is for a period of one year. It will begin January 11th, 2013, and it ends, or sunsets, as the contract indicates, December 31st, 2013. Now, with that, I don't know if Chief Eshman would like to say anything further, but this is, like I said, first phase of approving, or at least considering, awarding a contract to someone. Chief?
The position we're discussing is called the inside or desk officer position. 24 hours a day, 365 days a year, an officer has to man this position. He serves as the firefighter, truck driver, backup dispatcher, and prisoner processor. He serves as the firefighter, truck driver, backup dispatcher, and prisoner processor. About three years ago, the Berkeley Public Safety Officers Association stepped up to the plate in some difficult economic times and allowed us to replace a sworn officer union position with a contractor position. So this is an ongoing spot. We just simply, in this resolution, seek a renewal of that, as the city manager explained, up through December 31st of this year.
Very good. Thank you, Chief. Are there any questions for the Chief on this issue? Seems straightforward enough. Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll on R113?
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Kadekell?
Yes.
Plaid Onson?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. Now, Ms. Prince, would you please read item number 4?
Resolution Number R213, a matter of approving a contract with Brian Smith as a public safety officer.
Is there a motion to approve R213?
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Blanchard with support by Mayor Pro Tem Turbrack. Ms. Sessa.
Council, this is the second part of this resolution. Now, under this resolution, we're asking you to consider the appointment of an individual, of a person. Now, he is with us here this evening, but I'd like to ask Chief Eshman to elaborate a little bit on the details of this contract and perhaps introduce this person to the City Council. Chief?
Okay. Catherine Pounders is the current person in the position. However, due to the retirement, Public Safety Officer Mary Steron, we are sending her to a police academy effective January 11th, and she will become on that day a public safety officer. So due to that, the position will be open on Friday. And through our recruitment process and interviews, we've selected Mr. Brian Smith as the replacement. Mr. Smith has been a Berkeley resident for about six years. He is a state-certified firefighter. The contract goes again from Friday till December 31st. The amount in the contract is consistent with Catherine Powerns, who, again, is currently in the position, and her predecessor, now Public Safety Officer Scott Smith. The position, it seems, the last two occupants of it have moved up. And since we had an opportunity to observe their work and monitor the performance, in both those cases, we decided to elevate them when the position became available. And so with that, we have... the city manager has agreed with us, chosen Mr. Smith.
Thank you, City Council. I love being a resident here in the city, and I look forward to serving the community as well. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Smith is a trained firefighter?
Yes, sir.
At the moment?
Yes, sir.
Excellent.
Can you give a little bit of background, Chief, of his experience, if you don't mind, sir?
Mr. Smith is not currently a firefighter. He is a graduate of a fire academy. He volunteered to come onto our fire department in September, but when this came up, that's out, obviously, as a contract employee. He also is a graduate of a police academy, Oakland...
Yes, sir.
Police Academy. Currently working in construction and works with motors and that suits us just fine when it comes to the trucks and jaws of life and chainsaws and all the equipment that goes along with the firefighting.
So excellent preparation.
Yes.
Thank you. If there aren't any other...
Real quick comment. This program of bringing these people in has been an excellent chance for us to work with the people, evaluate their level of expertise, get them trained on how we work. And as you see, by the last two that were promoted, it's a very, very good program for us and our succession of keeping well-trained people in this... in our Department of Public Safety. So I think it's well worth keeping this going.
Good. Mayor Pro Tem Turbrack?
Welcome, Mr. Smith. Just one question for you. Do you or have you played any softball?
Baseball in high school, sir, but no softball.
Nope, fantastic. That's better. Thank you. Welcome aboard.
Yes, sir. Good thinking, Mayor Pro Tem. Good thinking. On that note, Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll on 213?
Turbrack?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Kadekell?
Yes.
Plaid Onson?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. And now, Ms. Prince, would you please read item number 5 on tonight's agenda?
Resolution Number R313, a matter of approving a letter of understanding with the Berkeley Public Safety Officers Association regarding a temporary public safety officer contract position.
Is there a motion to approve R313?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Stedman.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Kadekell. Ms. Sessa.
Council, again, this is the first step in considering a separate contract position. Now, this is a little... this is a little different. There have been some changes in our city that have caused us to undertake this area. This is not something that we'd like to do in terms of contracting with our officers. But we had a situation that arose, and I'd like Chief Eshman to elaborate a little further to the public and to the City Council as to how we came about this solution. I do wish to thank the union for working with us in developing this type of agreement. It is only a... it's a one-year agreement, but it could be less depending on the situation. It has been reviewed by our city attorney as well, and we are recommend... he is recommending that as well for consideration. But with that, let me ask Chief Eshman to please explain how this came about and why we're doing this. So, Chief Eshman, thank you.
About four years ago, then Public Safety Officer Justin Frost enlisted in the United States Navy Reserve. At that time, he knew that there was a war, obviously. Everyone knew of the situation overseas, but he chose to put himself in harm's way. As though being a firefighter and a police officer wasn't enough, he elected to serve his country. This is his second deployment since enlisting. In this deployment, he's in Afghanistan as we speak, on the ground, he's not on a ship. He has an assignment already in Afghanistan. We do not know how long he will be gone. Initially, it was projected at October, but these things sometimes end up sooner, sometimes later. We don't know. But I would like to say that I and other members of our department, and we've discussed this quite a bit, we're very proud of now Sergeant Frost's service, not only in Berkeley, where he's an outstanding officer, but also to the country. He stepped up and now... however, the other side of the coin is, we have a hole in the lineup. So while we thank him, now we will try to fill his spot. This is an unusual situation. This contract that we suggest could end at any time. We discussed it with the union. In group participatory fashion, we discussed with them what we could do. And they have stepped up to the plate again. And the solution is simply this: we can hire a contract employee for either one year or the day Justin Frost comes back, whichever comes sooner. That could be tomorrow, theoretically. We just don't know. But the union voted, absent two votes that were not returned unanimously, to approve this arrangement. That, again, helps us. This shows the measure of civic commitment that our union members have towards the city and the appreciation that they have towards Justin Frost's service. So with that, you have that unusual letter of agreement in front of you. So that's how we're going to fill the opening. Again, to... well, I'll go at that.
So we'll just focus for a moment on the item in front of us, which is that letter of understanding. Are there any questions about that letter of understanding? Mayor Pro Tem Turbrack?
I don't have a question more, just to comment. And Chief, it's something that you mentioned as well. You know, we just had a bunch of fighting in Washington, two sides, you know, fighting over the cliff and what's best, and not being able to come to an agreement until the 11th hour. We had an entire professional sports league on strike up until, you know, a couple days ago, because you get people fighting over things. And yet, our Public Safety Department continues to go above and beyond of what, you know, other cities, other unions might not do, but because they know that it's in the best interest of the city, it's in the best interest, you know, of the officers, they continue to step up and approve agreements like this and come up with ideas to continue providing the high-quality, professional, public safety service that everyone in this city has come to know and love and appreciate. And I think that that can't be underscored. I know that some people say, "Oh, you're doing contracts." Well, there's a reason we're doing contracts. Okay, we have an officer, a sergeant now, who is overseas, who, as you mentioned, he's serving his country, and we have a hole, and we need to figure out how to fill that hole, and that created quite a predicament. But, you know, the union allowing us, you know, to fill that with a contract position, it's very important and it's critical for us to maintain our strength, to be at full strength, not have a hole. And I just can't say no. It's... a lot of places would not do that. They wouldn't step up, they would draw a line in the sand and say, "No, sorry, we're over here, you're over there. You figure something out." And that's not how our officers operate, and I'm very proud to live in Berkeley and to have the opportunity to work with our Public Safety Department.
Thank you. Anything... well, I think you have said it eloquently. I don't know that anyone can add to that eloquent expression of our appreciation. Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll on R313?
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Kadekell?
Yes.
Plaid Onson?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. And now, Ms. Prince, would you please read item number 6?
Resolution Number R413, a matter of approving a temporary contract with Mike Garnett as a public safety officer.
Is there a motion to approve R413?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Blanchard. Support. Support by Councilmember Kadekell. Ms. Sessa.
Council, now is the second phase of this portion, and it is to recommend an appointment to this position. Again, I know all the details, but if Chief Eshman doesn't mind, just please, again, in a very summary fashion, explain to the City Council who we are recommending and why we're doing this and other details. Thank you.
This is, again, a very unique position. If we were to hire just someone off the street, that person would be looking at an uncertain term of employment. That person would probably by necessity have to keep looking. Again, if we were to hire someone in a regular employee situation, there might have to be a layoff upon Justin Frost's return or another type of termination or separation. So we're faced with that. The union, again, headed by their president, David Arnie, got with me and we worked out what we could do. And we agreed that perhaps we could hire a current employee who was about to retire. That would eliminate training time. It takes perhaps a month to two months for an individual, no matter how fire-experienced, to learn the dispatch and the prisoner processing end of this. And so in order to save that training time, police officer, public safety officer, Mike Garnett, who was considering retirement, offered to retire and come back for this indefinite amount of time. This saves all the training time. It saves the risk factor of an employee who may or may not hook up successfully with this. And he has offered to take the temporary spot. He does this already. About one day out of every five on his squad, he fills that position. So there would be zero training time. Mike is a 26-year veteran. Here's a person who answers the bell every day. In 26 and a half years, he has never called in sick, not once. So we feel we're getting the right person, and he is willing to accept the uncertainty of the length of employment. And that's why we're recommending Mike.
Thank you. Any questions for Chief Eshman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, following up on what Mayor Pro Tem says, the teamwork that we have here, Officer Garnett could have retired and gone onto his happy trails, but he sees the need and the importance of having someone here, and I think that's great that he has decided to stay on for as many months or whatever it takes.
Exactly. I think this is, again, a win-win situation, and the sentiment here on council is one of gratitude to Mike Garnett and to you for organizing this and the union for agreeing to it. Well done, all the way around. And it redounds to the benefit of the residents of our city. And we thank you. Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll on R413?
Blanchard?
Yes.
Kadekell?
Yes.
Plaid Onson?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. And now, Ms. Prince, would you please read item number 7?
Motion Number M113, a matter of approving the appointment of Juanita Mathis to the Historical Commission with a term expiring July 2015.
Is there a motion to approve M113?
Motion to approve M113.
Support.
Support.
Support by... It's moved by Councilmember Baker, support by Councilmember Kadekell. Ms. Sessa.
Yes, Council, very briefly, I want to give you, the people, a little bit of information about Juanita. She is self-employed, and she does statistical and clerical work for various organizations. And she is the Archives Chair for the Quill Club and also does sales for music memorabilia. And she has been a resident of the City of Berkeley for approximately 64 years. She simply indicates that, as a longtime resident for the City of Berkeley, that she is very much interested in our history. So I guess 64 years is a good qualification. With that, Your Honor, we are recommending that the City Council consider this appointment. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments from the council? Councilmember Baker?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to appreciate, stand my gratitude to the council for considering this tonight that I added on to the agenda. I've had the chance to work with her a little bit as liaison to the committee. She's actually been showing up in a resident's capacity and already contributed meaningfully to the group, and we want to acknowledge all that she's done and all that she will continue to do as an active member of the committee. So thank you again for your consideration.
Thank you. And, Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll on M113?
Kadekell?
Yes.
Plaid Onson?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. And now, we come to the communications portion of the meeting. Ms. Prince, who should be first?
Councilmember Plaid Onson.
Councilmember Plaid Onson's got the floor.
I had to get mine out. I'm not live tweeting this. My notes are in my phone. Just a quick update from the Environmental Advisory Committee, as much as I would like to drag this meeting on as long as possible due to, I don't know, some alleged sporting event. Just one thing tonight. The next meeting of the Environmental Advisory Committee is tomorrow night at 7:00 PM in the meeting room on the second floor of the Public Safety Building, and they are welcoming the public to attend. They are planning for an energy efficiency seminar. They're also going to have the Woodward Avenue Action Association join them to fill them in their efforts to bring transit and a grand fondo to Woodward. It's a cycling event, for those who don't know much about it, kind of a big deal cycling event. So if you're interested in those topics, they would love to have you, again, tomorrow night, Environmental Advisory Committee, 7:00 PM, in the Public Safety Building. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Kadekell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. While I wore the colors not so favorable to Mayor O'Dwyer, I'd like to say good luck to the Irish tonight.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Turbrack?
In deference to the mayor, I will just say Happy New Year to all, prosperous 2013. That is all.
Very good. Thank you. Councilmember Baker?
Yes, sir. I've prepared just a few notes here today. Actually, it was Councilmember Stedman.
Did I do that? I can't do that. It was Dennis Roth who once said, "If it takes a lot of words to say what you have in mind, give it more thought." And so with that, I'd like to say Happy New Year and thanks, and here's to 2013.
Thank you.
It saves the risk factor of an employee who may or may not hook up successfully with this, and he has offered to take the temporary spot. He does this already. About one day out of every five on his squad, he fills that position, so there would be zero training time. Mike is a 26-year veteran. Here's a person who answers the bell every day.